Meeting of November 12th at 6:30. Uh, can I get a roll call, please?
Goss.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
Ingram.
Hello.
McGuire.
Here.
Patterson. Rector.
Here.
Store. Summers.
Here.
Taylor.
Yeah.
Thorson.
Here.
Tinsley.
Present.
Batschisbatty.
Here.
Wolken.
Here.
Young.
Here.
Clemmons.
Here.
Clifford. Covert. Eisenman.
Here.
Ezri.
Here.
Portato. Rosales.
Here. Uh, great. Uh, seek approval of the-
Oh. Sorry.
But I'm here.
Dillard Myers.
Here.
Guess we're all here. Looks pretty full except Lorraine. Great. Uh, seek approval of the agenda and addendum. Well, moved by Ezri, second by Eric. Thank you. Um, discussion? See none? Corrections? Uh, Charles?
Yeah, so in the future, because I'm going to be reading these off, um, I don't know who writes up these minutes, but, um, in the future, when I do my appointments, I don't- it was inconsistent with what I got later with the addendum. And, um, I know that's what the addendum is for, but it'd be helpful on my end to, um, I don't know, spell some of this stuff out. Like, there was- originally, there were three vacancy there. It's supposed to be, I think, two now. With the, um, county board chair A1A, Public Aid Appeal Committee, three vacancies. Supposed to be two vacancies, I think.
There's- there's three vacancies. We're just filling the two of them tonight.
Oh.
We have an additional one on your desk, which is this one.
Okay.
But-
That's it.
But because it wasn't put out, uh, 48 hours ahead of time, I wanted to go ahead and, uh, run this appointment by you because of the fact that, uh, this individual applied late. But I wanted to get all the interviews basically accomplished at this cow- at this cow meeting instead of the December cow. So what you see there on your agenda is basically the two that are gonna- that were actually approved by policy. But this third one applied late and I interviewed late, but I didn't want to wait a whole new cycle to go ahead and include it in the agenda. So if you all accept that as, uh, an addition, I would, you know, love to see that happen. Does that answer your question regarding the minutes, Charles?
Yeah, yeah, but I also noticed some stuff on, um, underneath the county executive, too. On the second page on 82.
What is that?
Is that one position?
Charles, why don't you just treat off the white people?
Yeah, I see. Oh, well, yeah, I'm just saying that, okay. This is official, too, so we're supposed to edit this and make correction if necessary. That's part of the process.
Yeah, but they gotta print it out and mail it to everybody.
That's it. I'm good.
Great. So there's no changes then, right? To the agenda? Great. Thank you, Charles. Item number, uh, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, approval of the minutes of, uh, Special Finance Committee of the Whole, September 26th, 2019.
Can I ask for a correction?
Pardon?
Can I ask for a correction?
Sure.
Okay. Um, I have to make a after motion? Okay, sorry.
Okay. Okay, moved by- by Jim, second by Ezri. Discussion. Leah.
Yeah, I'm not normally nitpicky, but my per- on- on page seven, it refers to on pa- on line 183, I'm Mr. Taylor. And, uh, 192 and 201, we apparently have a Mr. Covert. So I think both of us would probably prefer to have Ms.
Sure enough. Thank you very much for that-
Thank you.
Uh, correction, Leah. Did you get that, Megan? Thank you. Pardon? Right, Special Finance Committee meeting. Uh, Jody.
Um, on page five as- or page four as well, you have Ms. McGuire and Mr. Coward, Stu.
Ms. McGuire.
I thought he'd appreciate that.
Could we make those corrections as well, Megan? Thank you very much, Jody, for bringing that up to us. Are there any other corrections on these minutes? See none? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, seek approval of the minutes, uh, Committee of the Whole, October 15th, 2019.
Amen.
Moved by John, second by Eric. Discussion? Corrections, deletions? Misses, mister? See none? All those in favor? Opposed? See none? Motion carries. Public participation is- does the public, uh, wish to address this board at this time? I don't have any slips in front of me, so I would assume that there are none. Just give you a second pause, just in case you change mine. Okay, thank you for that. Any board communications? I know that there's a few. Go ahead, um, Charles.
Okay, so, um, I have some good news and some improving news. First, the good news. I'm proud to announce that I completed my, what I write on here, UCCI Achievement Graduation Certificate.
Congratulations. And all of those that, uh, who else completed that, I believe?
Lorraine Coward, um, Vice Chair.
Lorraine Coward?
And that was it.
Okay, just two-
So I'm a stickler for education. I think that's the way to improve in a lot of things in life. So I'm really proud of this.
We're proud of you achieving that.
Really, really proud of that.
Thank you, Charles.
So that's one thing. The other is, let me find a paper here. Um, now, this is the improvement news. I'm not going to be long-winded, but just a few comments. Since I had been on the county board, I had come to the conclusion that it, system, practices, and process has a lot of flaws that seriously need to be looked into in regards to how things are done and decisions are made. And I'm not just talking about with voting alone, but with behind-the-scenes activities and what take place also now in our public meetings. There is no real check and balance system in place and no language to say how things are really done correctly or not. There's a lot of ambigu- ambiguities in open communication, which I think is intentionally done. And dishonest talk with taxpayer- taxpayers and how we use their money. That's it. That's my improving news. That's it.
Thank you for sharing that, Charles. Are there any board comments at this time? Okay, yes, uh, Eric?
Yeah, this is more of a question. Uh, how many months has it been since we sold the nursing home? It's been a while. The sign's lit up. It says Champagne County Nursing Home. So what can we do, either through the Facilities Committee or is the county board, can we go over as a group and push the sign over? Can we cover it with a cloth? Can we take one of John Rector's cozies and put it on the sign? Says something different. I think that the- the purchaser should have that sign down, at least not light it up at night. It's no longer our nursing home. I know we have some financial responsibilities and liability responsibilities, but do we have a mechanism? And I'm asking, if this can be looked into, to, uh, get that sign covered, removed, the letters taken off, the lights taken out, short of, you know, some civil disobedience. I think that, uh, there must be a solution that's not that hard to do to at least take our name off of that sign as soon as possible. And it should have happened a long time ago.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, uh, let the record show, I agree with Mr. Thorson, 100%. We did discuss that at facilities, because I share the same frustration. And Dana said Darlene was working with them and a lot of- there's some other issues, too, and that's- that's one of them. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but- but I am putting you on the spot.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So yes, the sign has been on my agenda. We have a bi-weekly meeting, conference call with them, and we go through our outstanding issues that are still to be resolved. We're almost down to nothing, but the sign is one of the last things. They had to order signs. They had to order specific signs, like, because they're off of the main road. So where we used to have nursing home signs, they'll be putting other signs up, and they had to get city approval for some of those. There's been a process, but they are working on it. Dana was supposed to have taken our sign letters off so that we can reuse the Champagne County part somewhere else if we want to. Um, and he just didn't get to that. He's on vacation this week. So it's a thi- it's in progress. We just- we're- it is a long process.
That'd be nice if the vendor was actually taking them down. We didn't have to send our own people to go take down something from their sign that they should have done. So thank you for working on that. Thank you, John, for the update.
And thank you, Eric, for bringing that to our attention, but I did ask, and, uh, I know that it was a process. And, uh, we're gonna go ahead and keep those lettering, so we want to be able to make sure that they're taken off appropriately and not damaged. So, thank you, Darlene. Are there any further board comments? See none? Policy, uh, policy, personnel, and appointments, uh? Kyle?
What?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's all good.
How did I get that?
That we said it's all good and that's it.
You've spent a long day for me.
That's okay. Me, too. Thank you, Chair Rosales. And also, I want to take time out and thank Chair Rosales for at least inviting me to take part in the appointment process that he appointed a few names, um, to the Public Aid, uh, Board. Um, unlike the county executive, who still insists, no, the person's gonna do it her way. So, um, I just want to thank you, Geraldo, for that. Yeah, I appreciate that. Vice Chair, go ahead.
I don't do many appointments, but, uh-
That's okay. But at least y- you open to it. And that's what this board need to hear, openness, more than just words that's on paper. I keep saying, we gotta learn to interact with each other.
Thank you, Charles.
So, Vice Chair Rector, I need your help, because I got a lot going on tonight with the, um, consent agenda, so please keep track of them, okay? Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna do these individually. So we have the county board chair appointment is recommending that Bryant Warner Rona to Public Aid Appeal Committee, one position, one R, term 12/1/19 to 11/30/22. Can I get a motion? 21, sorry. Oops, 21. Can I get a motion? John Rector, second. Okay. He's second, good. Um, any discussion? All in favor by saying aye? Any nay? Motion passed. Okay, uh, the county board chair appointment is recommending, Andrew Quastrom to the Public Aid Appeal Committee, one position, um, Democrat, term 2/12/19 to 11/30/2021. Ingram, so move? Second, who's second? Stephanie, any discussion? All in favor by saying aye? Any nay? Motion passed. Okay, the county board.
Oh. If you look at bullet point two, on item two-
Oh, yeah, I gotta read this off, right?
On your sheet.
So I recommended this to you?
My third appointment for that board, Board of Appeals.
So what about, just read it off?
Uh, yes, she- she applied, uh, late after the deadline, and so I'm including her here in the packet. Her questionnaires is in- attached to that orange sheet. And I would like you all to move her for- forward, if you so wish. So do you want to read her?
Okay, okay.
Danielle Channawith?
Alrighty, so, um, the county board chair appointment is recommending Danielle Channawith, who, uh, will be appointed to the Public Aid Board. Was it one term?
Appeals, right, Appeals Board for 12/1/2019 through 11/30-
30/20/21. Can I get a motion? Um, was it Tenley first, Leah second? Any discussion? Jim Goss.
Yeah, question.
Yes.
How do we- how do we work around this not being publicly noticed? I mean, are we worried about that? And I'm- I'm just putting it out there to ask the question.
Chair Geraldo?
I- she- well, she passed the deadline, and I wanted to be able to include it here. I interviewed her yesterday. Uh, I could wait a whole nother month and basically propose this, uh, appointment for, uh, December.
Um, Jim, my understanding, and I could have be wrong about this, um, is that it's not final action?
The item is on the agenda for these appointments. I don't know that it's required that we list the incumbents or the- the- all the applicants.
Fair enough. I just wanted to get it out there so that we didn't come back at some point and have somebody arguing.
Yeah, these will be moved forward and then, uh, for the entire board meeting on third Thursday of the month. So we're just making an announcement now and approving it out of the cow. Yes, Ezri?
I was just gonna say, at the least, we could bring Danielle's name back at the board meeting, I would think, because that would be plenty of time to list. I mean, just saying, at the least. I'm not- Technically, I guess, I don't know, but I'm not super worried about having it on tonight's meeting. I'm just saying, if we absolutely needed to, we wouldn't necessarily have to wait till December.
So I'll just formally ask, can we just keep Danielle off the consent agenda?
Did everybody hear that?
Yep.
Okay. Charles, it's your turn.
Discussions? All right, moving forward. Oh, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Can I get a motion? Oh, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nay? Motion passed. All right, where we at now? B, County Executive. One monthly HR report, October 2019, has been accepted and placed on file. Two, the 2020 holiday calendar information only, page 18. Three, the county executive is recommending the request approval of the 2020 County Board Calendar of Meeting. Can I get a motion? Kyle first, Leah second. Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nay? Motion passed. Alrighty. Four, the county executive recommending, well, I meant the request approval of the Champagne County Policy with A Information Technology. I'm gonna do one at a time, right? Can I get a motion? Jim Goss, second. Leah, second. All in favor by saying aye? Oh, discussion, sorry. Discussion? All in favor by saying aye? Any nay? Motion passed. Request approval for the county, um, policy with B, discrimination harassment. Can I get a motion? Can I get Leah? Second motion. Eric, any discussion? Kyle?
Uh, I was wondering, Darlene, if you could answer, um, what- what is new in this? All right, please.
All of it. The county actually hasn't had a policy, uh, countywide, and it's actually required by statute now. And so it's to meet that statute, and it's provided by our liability company. So this- this meets the requirements of the protection for the county. So it would actually be a new policy.
Okay, any more discussion? Stephanie?
I appreciate this new policy. I think I've talked a lot in- in this body about, um, that I feel like our sexual harassment protections for our staff are woefully out of date. I think that this is a good first step, but a better step would be, um, some sort of systematic training on behaviors, on recognition. And also, I mean, even with this, sort of the- the routes for complaints are narrow. And I think that- that's something that we need to be aware of. So I- I think that this is a good first step, um, but I- I don't feel that it's where we need to be as- as a county, uh, to ensure that all of our employees work in a safe and- and, um, healthy environment. So, but I- I think this is a good, solid first step, um, but I'm- I'm very interested to see where we go next in terms of- of training. Yes.
And just so you know, we're actually beginning interactive sexual harassment training for all employees starting the first of the year.
Pangeal?
Yeah, I was just wondering with regards to the, uh, especially with regards to the, um, IT policy, is there a plan for, like, periodic review of this policy? Because best practices change pretty frequently. You know, just flipping through this, I'm already- I have found at least one thing that, like, used to be best policy, but sort of, with regards to password rotation, is not really recommended.
That's actually one of the things we're gonna be looking at next year, is what's the plan for keeping them revised? This is the most current version that was provided by our liability company. And they actually do periodic reviews and push them out. And so part of our process internally will be, um, how do we implement those changes going forward?
Okay, great. Yeah, I- I didn't want to get too into the weeds on that, because I know that lots of people have put this together, and I don't think that's a productive discussion for all of us to have, so. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Discussion? Okay, all in favor by saying aye? Any nay? Motion passed. County Executive is recommending, um, the request approval of the Champagne County Policy with C, cannabis, drug, and alcohol conve- unconvenience. Can I get a motion? Who's that down there? Oh, Dr. Store? First, second? Second? Second, Leo? Any discussions? Um, Steve Summers?
Yeah, this is fairly luminous piece. I need to spend more time looking at it, but I noted the piece on page 66 of our minutes talks about CBD. Talks about use of CBD and a test result that might show a small amount of THC violating the county's drug-free workplace policy. That's a legal product. We're selling it at convenience stores now. And I'm having a hard time understanding how that would be placed in this as a violation of drug-free workplace policy. I know the lines get a little muddied with legalization of marijuana and all that, but that was something I was curious about. If you could explain that, I'd appreciate it.
First of all, this is- it's new, and again, this is provided by our liability firm and the lawyers that provide the- the policies for them. And part of that is, the policies exist to ex- to protect the county and the interests of the county and the resources of the county. And this is going to be a work in progress, but the reality is, there are lots of drugs that are perfectly legal that it's not appropriate to have actively impacting you in the workplace. And so it's gonna take some time for the state and for the- the legal system to sort of catch up in terms of what makes sense. But in terms of best practices for policies, this is what's represented as a place to start.
Well, it's- I- I know it's not a- a great medical term, but when the definition puts it as it doesn't make you high or stoned. I mean, I think they could do better in terms of description of- of that. And- and again, though, it's indicating that use of this is a violation of our countywide workplace. Drug-free workplace policy. That doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay, Ingram?
Um, if we're calling it a place to start, does that mean that we have the ability to make changes to it? Or would the- or do we have to basically up or down with what the liability company provides us?
The board, of course, has the opportunity to change it. The challenge is, if you do that, you could be introducing liabilities for the county that haven't been vetted by legal firms that specialize in- in this language or our own state's attorney's office. The states- the reason we went with these policies is because they're highly recommended by the state's attorney's office, and they're crafted by an agency in Chicago that specializes in this. Again, this is- this is new territory, and right now, the- the focus is to get the protection in- in place for the county first and foremost as across the state, we figure out really what is the best language, and we, in terms of legal experts, who recognize how to protect the counties.
I guess, um, if it's- if- if we made some changes or some- asked for some recommendations from the state's attorney's office or from the liability company or whoever it was, I think, um, it would be- it would be nice to look at this and- and potentially a couple of the- of these other languages that are in here. I mean, I- I'm down with making sure the county's protected, but within that, I would also like to make sure that our employees are protected.
And- and of course, the- the board has the opportunity to just understand that this is what's recommended by the state's attorney's office, and even if it's in place, we can go back and update it later. The concern right now that we have is we don't have these protections in place at all.
Okay, McGuire, then Summer.
Thank you, and I- I think this is about protecting employees from those that might be using, um, drugs that might impact, um, there- someone that might be under the influence and injure another employee, which we don't want to, as a, um, employer, do, because, um, obviously, we could be sued. Um, and this- this, I understand that CBD may not be an issue for many people, but this is really highlighting the fact that some CDBs are infused with THC, which is a cannabinoid, which is, um, something that could be, um, you know, make it more difficult for employees to work. So, um, you know, that's- I think that's the point that they're trying to make and what the state's attorney and, um, people are suggesting is a problem. Not necessarily the CDB, CBD.
Okay, Summers, then Stephanie.
So just to, for clarification's sake, so the state's attorney's office has reviewed this and vetted it and approved it. Okay.
Stephanie?
Can you give me a snapshot of the CBA, um, language and how it- how it has incorporated this issue? If it has incorporated this issue, and how it compares to the- the- the employees who are not, um, covered by collective bargaining?
Right now, um, as I understand it, and Darlene, please correct me if I'm wrong, that this- this is going to be a tough place to manage, because the county board doesn't have employees, and so this is a county policy. And it's up to each elected official to, uh, they can supersede this policy or implement other policies as well. And the collective bargaining agreement, as I understand, supersedes this as well, if it is in disagreement. So that- that would supersede it if that collective bargaining agreement has an agreement that addresses this. If- and- but if it's not addressed in the collective bargaining agreement, this could be uncharted territory.
If it's not addressed in the collective bargaining agreement, this is a change in workplace practices, it would have to be bargained. So that's my question, is like, how many people is this actually applying to and has this been bargained? Because- and because what I don't want is disparate- a disparate policy between those that are under a CBA and those aren't. And if this hasn't been bargained with the unions, then everybody who's in- under a CBA, frankly, this wouldn't apply to. Um, let me say that the collective bargaining agreements do have some specifications and clauses that relate to drug use, and they were just bargained, and I think cannabis was added to that. The language isn't exactly the same as this, but their con- their bargaining unit contract applies to those employees. We do need to- we will need to notify. We always notify the unions if there's been any change in any county policies at- for any reason, what- and whether it applies to them or not, so we let them know that the- these have occurred. Um, we do need to have something in place by January 1st, because it becomes a legal drug at that point, and if we don't have something in place, um, we will- we'll be pretty exposed with liability. But- but I will say that there is something- there has always been something in the union contracts that address drug use and those kinds of things, just like there has been in our drug- our drug use policies in the past. We've just added the cannabis stuff, and that's pretty complicated right now, because some of the laws are still being written. As- if you recall, I brought this to you, I think it was last April, and, um, we pulled it right off of the agenda because there was a new law passed at that time. So we're- we're trying to keep up again with the most recent things, but at some point, we have to have a policy in place. Um, I can also say that the sheriff's office and, um, the highway department have more stringent policies than this.
Dr. Store? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Kleppel kind of just addressed one of the concerns that I had because the highway department, transfer, department, federal department, transportation has very stringent rules about operating certain types of equipment, vehicles, and I know if you drive, for example, hazardous waste, you practically can't drink or look at alcohol at all, ever.
Okay. Any more discussions? Rector?
Yeah, I continue to be confused, like some of my colleagues. Page sixty-five, it says Champagne County prohibits the use and storage of both medical and recreational cannabis on its property at all its workplaces and in any employer-owned vehicles. So, I understand most of that, but if marijuana is legal, they can't have it in their car in the parking lot, but they can have a twelve-pack of beer in their car? I mean, that's where, I mean, I'm confused on some of this too, Mike. I'm just, I understand the intent, I understand the liability, I understand everything, but it's like, I don't know how, how this actually works. Again, the, our people on the streets, driving our vehicles, that's a whole different thing, but it's, can somebody have a twelve-pack of beer in their parking, in their car in the parking lot? No? But it's, it's legal if they're not consuming it.
It's against county policy to have alcohol on county premises if it's not a special event, like for example, the county makes an exception for an event like the Sweet Corn Festival, which is held on the, in the front of the courthouse. But that's always been, that's been the county policy for a long time.
So, could I have a follow-up? So, what if it's, if it's medical marijuana and it's prescribed, can they have that in their car in the parking lot? And again, I'm just trying to understand, I'm not criticizing anybody here. I understand why we need to have this policy.
No, they, that's also not allowed. And I will say, we do have employees where that's the case.
So, if they have some other type of prescribed, I guess I'm trying to, how do you differentiate between cannabis, if it's medical, and some other type of something that's prescribed? Because they both took a prescription.
They don't bring it to work, they take it at home. Well, I don't know, it's, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. So...
I'm gonna go move my car.
Ponjal then.
Maybe not bring it. Maybe file a policy?
No, I mean, I think this sort of points to maybe, thanks, John, for uncovering this sort of deeper issue with county policy where if an employee goes grocery shopping before work, then maybe they can't, you know, bring their groceries and leave them in their car, right? You know, maybe that's a problem that, that we need to look at as well.
Maybe the answer is absurd, absurd, you know, talking about the drug policy and alcohol and not just bring a loaf of bread.
All right, James Tinsley next.
I have a question on, on as far as like the testing, the testing of, I guess, marijuana positivity, like in regards to being a, violating the drug-free workplace policy. To my knowledge, it takes quite a while for it to, you know, work its way through your system. So, if you were to test an employee who might be in some sort of accident at the workplace, how would you dictate when that employee were to have used said marijuana?
Okay. So, just to backtrack to something that was just recently said, that's not that these are policies that we've written for the county. These are best practices that are being recommended for counties across the state. In terms of, in terms of the testing, it's about when there is an impairment. It's not just, hey, I think you might be doing something recreational. It's when there has been a risk that's been created, at the, for the county or for a county employee or for county premises. Giving the county the ability to send someone, for example, to an external person that specializes in this testing to make those determinations and to do the testing, if they are under the influence to the effect that is impairing their work. It's not something that I could just, you know, do on my own. It's where there's been an impact to the county and ensuring that the county can protect by sending somebody for the appropriate testing, by professionals who do that for a living.
Right. Yeah, so what I'm asking is, because for the most part, most testing is going to be a situation of positive or negative or a certain count in the bloodstream, correct? So, if a person was to be tested and came up positive, but there's no way to know if that person used that day or maybe seventeen days prior, how could you dictate?
Again, the question is from a place of, there's already been a liability created for the county. And giving the county an ability to address that.
So, could...
And in practicality, the places where this is going to show up in the most is in highway and in law enforcement where they have even more strict policies. This is simply putting it in place that if somebody does something and there's reasonable suspicion, there's actually separate forms when you take a look at how to put this into practice. There's actually forms and techniques and tools in place for identifying reasonable suspicion. And the testing is to verify the reasonable suspicion, not just to send somebody out and throw them under the bus. It's because there's already reasonable suspicion that's been documented.
Okay. So, even with reasonable suspicion, I think there should be some type of, some type of policy ensuring that it's not just a cut black and white, either they're positive or negative, and they automatically violate the work-free, drug-free workplace policy.
So, I think it would be similar to alcohol, which has been our policy for many years. If somebody came to work and appeared to be drunk, we don't do a test to say right at that moment, you aren't, we see that's affecting their work. They can't type, they can't walk straight, whatever the problems are. And so that, at that point, we determine it's impairing what they're able to do, and then we would send them for testing. So similarly, it would be if something else was, if somebody was taking a legal drug, Vicodin or whatever, and was taking too much, they could be falling asleep at their desk. They could be, those are, that's impairing their work.
So, let me say this, do we want to keep going or wrap this up? McGuire?
Well, I think the other part of this is if without a policy and people don't understand what it is, someone who's driving a vehicle, the people that are going to determine at what level it is, is going to be the lawyer from the other side that's suing the county. And they're going to request a drug test, a blood alcohol test, and they're going to decide, and the county's going to be liable for what happens because there is no policy, whoever it is, whether, wherever the person is that's driving the vehicle.
Eric is next. Eric, then you can go.
Yeah, to back up from, we're getting a little bit into the details, and there's details in here that I agree or disagree with. But ESOC says, you know, this is a policy we're going to perhaps vote on tonight, and then there's time to change it. My question is, when is that time?
Yeah, if the board just reads through it in great detail and gets other legal opinions and the law changes, whatever, we can go back and change it at that time. We normally do this like annually or every other year, but it's, you know, it can be done as often as you want to do it.
Okay. And we would bring that through policy.
Okay. And the last person, James Tinsley. Are you good? Okay. Hate to say there's any more discussion? Okay. All in favor by saying aye? Aye. Any nay? Okay. What is that, raise hands? Okay. So, all in favor by saying aye, raise your hand? What we got? Who counting? Ten, is that ten, is that correct? Twelve? Okay. So, the ayes have it. Motion pass. All ready? Where we at? Number five. The county executive is recommending this review and recommendation for IT system administrator for the finance committee. Can I get a motion? Can't I get a motion? Clemens Harper? Azren, okay. Second, Harper? Any discussion? Dr. Storey, go.
Thank you. I was looking at the job description, mathematical skills on page seventy-nine, and I applaud the, the sentence that says that the applicant should be able to do simple arithmetic and whole numbers. I also think that this, that this, we're setting the bar pretty low here, and that I'd at least like to see that the applicant should be able to do at least elementary statistics, because I think that's going to be something that's going to be pretty useful for the IT administrator. There might be other measures that, that should be able to be done, but I think that the mathematical skills seem pre, seem rather weak to me.
Okay. Any more discussion? Sister Connie?
Just as IT person, the associate's degree and this pay range for a systems administrator, I don't know if you guys are prejudiced to anything else, but it looks kind of low to me, hourly rate. And usually a systems administrator is someone with a computer science background and IT background, and they get a certification. So, they usually have a bachelor's, sometimes a master's degree. You guys just have associate's degree listed here.
Okay. Any more discussion? Discussion? All in favor by saying aye? Any nay?
Aye.
Okay. Motion pass. All right, where I'm at? Number six, the county executive appointment is recommending William Wilson, who is appointed to the Willow Branch Drainage District, term eleven twenty-one twenty nineteen to eight thirty twenty twenty-two. Can I get a motion? Rector for Harper, second? Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye? Aye. Any nay? Motion pass. B, the county executive appointment is recommending, which, who is this? Cindy Bell, who is appointed to the community action board. It is it? That's okay. Twenty twenty-one, twelve one twenty nineteen to eleven thirty twenty twenty-two. Can I get a motion? Goss first, second motion? Was it Azren? Isman? Isman? Okay. Any discussion? Dr. Storey, go.
I serve on the community action board with Cindy Bell and also with Mr. Dick Norton, and both have done a pretty good job, especially Mr. Norton.
Okay. Cool. Any more discussion? All in favor by saying aye? Aye. Any nay? Motion passed. The county executive appointment is recommending Dick Norton, is appointed, who is appointed to the community action board. One, one twenty twenty to twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-two. Can I get a motion? Dr. Storey, second? Ponjal? Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye? Any nay? Motion pass. The county executive is appointing, is recommending, who next on here? What, Kathy? Oh. Kathy Bar, who is appointed. One position, term one one twenty twenty, one one twenty twenty-two, twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-two. Can I get a motion? Leah first, second motion? Ingram second, any discussion? All in favor by saying aye? Any nay? Motion pass. All right, who next? Is it Dick Norton? I did, didn't? Jane Weber, right? The county executive is appointing, is recommending Jane Weber, who is appointed to the community action board, term one one twenty twenty to twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-two. Can I get a motion? Dr. Storey, second motion? Jim Goss, any discussion? All in favor by saying aye? Any nay? Motion pass. C, the county executive appointment is recommending, who is this, Charles Hughes, Jr.? Who? Okay. James Hughes, Jr., who is appointed to the Bill Hoss Cemetery Association, one position, term eleven twenty-one twenty nineteen to six thirty twenty twenty-two. Can I get a motion? Who that? Azren. Second motion? Second. Harper? Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye? Any nay? Motion pass. All right, who's next? Misty Nelson? The county executive is appointing recommending Misty Nelson, who is appointed to the Bill Hoss Cemetery Association, one position, term eleven twenty-one twenty nineteen to six thirty twenty twenty-two. Can I get a motion? Sobu, Rector, second, by standing, any discussion? All in favor by saying aye? Any nay? Motion pass. Who we have left? Andy Hughes? Did we do that one? Okay. The county executive is appointing recommending Andy Hu, who is appointed to the Bill Hoss Cemetery Association, term eleven twenty-one twenty nineteen to six thirty twenty twenty-five. Can I get a motion? Second? Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye? Any nay? Motion pass. The county executive appointment is recommending Denise Robertson, who is appointed, one position, term eleven twenty, eleven twenty-one twenty nineteen to six thirty twenty twenty-five. Can I get a motion? Second? Who's second? Good. Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye? Any nay? Motion pass. Good, we got one more left, I believe. The county executive appointment is recommending Richard Weldon, who is appointed, Walden, thank you for the correction, to Bill Hoss Cemetery Association, term eleven twenty-one twenty nineteen to six thirty twenty twenty-five. Can I get a motion? Any discussion? You guys got the names over there recorder? Okay, good. All in favor by saying aye? Any nay? Motion pass. What was the one? Okay. I think, where we at? D, East Central Illinois Land Bank Authority, discussion only. I, local government director of the land bank, three position, term twelve one twenty nineteen, eleven thirty twenty twenty-two. This is just for discussion only. Do our county executive want to come up and explain this right here or speak from there?
I can just speak from here.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point out to the board that at the last meeting, you guys approved joining the East Central Illinois Land Bank Authority. The land bank will be meeting this month to accept our, joining them because they also have to do it from their side. By doing that, they will then say that we will need to have three representatives represent our county on their board of directors. The board of directors can be, let's see here. It can be, it can be someone that is a... It can be, it can be someone that is a local, um, county board chairman, county board member, the county executive, or any employee or agent of the county. And we need three representatives. So I will be trying to make those appointments at the next meeting, and I would appreciate if any of you are interested in doing that, to let me know. I'm also thinking about potentially John Hall, who will probably be going to the meetings anyway, so he would be a good representative, probably. Or if you have other ideas, I'd be happy to hear them, but, um, we need to make our appointments fairly quickly so that we can serve on this board.
Okay, anybody else? Any more discussion about it?
You want to go?
Here. Dr. Storey.
Just so it's on the microphone, yeah. We talked about it a lot, and I think John Hall's a great choice, and I would also be happy to serve him.
I'd be interested in serving on that.
As ELEC Chair, I don't necessarily need more on my plate, but I'd be willing to serve too. I mean, we're all busy, so, um, not that we all, any of us necessarily need any more on our plate, but I'd be willing to serve too, if need be.
Correct me if I'm long, wrong, um, Darlene, but does this position that you mentioned before require traveling to, they might be meeting in Danville, Decatur, somewhere?
Yeah, the meetings, well, the current meetings are being held in Danville, because it was just in Vermillion County before, but they're, I don't know, the board could decide to alternate locations, you know? They, they don't meet very regularly, I think it's a quarterly meeting, it's not monthly at this point. But again, the board can change its mind, now that we have more members, they can change how they operate.
Decide on that, okay. Any more discussion? Okay, moving along. C, county clerk, one, October twenty nineteen, report has been accepted and placed on file. D, my vice policy chair, John Rector, would do this part for me. Other business.
Charles has the motion, John. He's got the actually.
Got it. I move. No. This is the wrong one. Hold on. Thank you. There we go. Thank you for your patience. I, I move that the closed session minutes dated nine sixteen two thousand and three, six eight two thousand and five, at eight forty PM, eight twenty-four two thousand and six, one eighteen twenty eleven, five eight twenty twelve, dash two, and nine eleven twenty twelve, to remain, to open and maintain all others as closed. I made the motion, so.
I'm not sure what's going on. Okay, what do you?
You got the second?
Summer's second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye? Any nay? Motion pass. All righty, B, bear with me, chair report, information only. One vacancy appointment for county executive, information only, A.
We don't, we don't need to read all these, if you don't want.
I thought I had to read them for the record.
On E? I, I, Darlene?
Ooh. I don't need to read them all? Okay, all the information's there for you, then.
Just trying to help you out, sir.
Well, that's good, that's good. All the information is there, and you can see that on your own. F, um, items on the consent agenda, what do we have, Mr. Rector?
I welcome input from everybody. I have seven one A, but that was only for Rona and Cor, Cornstrom, Quans. So I don't know if we can do that, since Chenoweth, are all three of those together? Or can I separate those two for the consent agenda? Okay, there's, okay. And then six A, or I'm sorry, four A, four B, six A, six B, six C.
Is that it? You got that recorded? Okay, all of this information conclude my report. Uh, you, back to you, Chair Rosales.
Thank you very much, uh, it's Charles Young and, uh, John Rector.
Now we move on to finance, item eight A. Jim?
Is there a motion for a budget amendment transfer, budget amendment nineteen dash zero 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 fifty-two, fund zero eight zero, animal control to Department two four eight, animal impound services? It's an increased appropriation of six thousand dollars, the increased revenue is zero. The reason is to be needed to, due to the large impoundment of dogs from the City of Champaign hoarding case. Eighty-four dogs and puppies were impounded on ten twenty-two. All dogs are being held pending a court case, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Mister, Mister Clemens, second by Mister Thorzland, discussion? Mister, Mister Storey?
Thank you. I, I saw that the animal control officer is, is in attendance. And I wondered if she would care to speak to the, to the motion.
Good evening. Thank you for, um, your, uh, attention to this. October twenty-second, we, uh, served a search warrant in the City of Champaign for a hoarding case where we impounded, uh, over eighty dogs from one residence. We obviously are near the end of the budget, and so, uh, I needed to increase the, uh, the food line and the, um, supplies line in order to care for these animals. They have been owner relinquished. The majority of them have been owner relinquished at this time, however, it is taking time for me to find, uh, places for eighty-four dogs to go. So we have transferred out twenty-three as of Friday last week, but that, that means I still have sixty-four dogs to care for. And, uh, we are currently you, going through about, um, fifty pounds of dog food every other day, right now.
Ms. Fortato?
Since maybe there's somebody watching this right now who needs a little friendly dog in their lives, what kind of dogs are, are you talking about? Are they little dogs, big dogs?
They're all under fifteen pounds. Most of them are, uh, terrier mix breeds and, uh, chihuahua mix breeds.
Any, any other? Uh, Mr. Tinsley, I think, was next.
Thank you, Mr. Goss. Just for the record, uh, what was, what's your capacity at before the, the eighty-four dogs? How much of an impact has that had on, like, uh, you said, like, food, but like, as far as, like, bed space?
So the facility is, um, able to hold forty-five dogs, that's maximum, um, capacity for dogs. We currently have, um, the dogs housed, um, eight in a kennel, at this point. It's really the only way we can manage it and still have room for all of the other incoming dogs, uh, that we have. Luckily, uh, this did not occur in June. October is historically our busiest month of the year. This year has not let me down. But, uh, uh, we are starting to enter into the slower time of the year for impoundments, however, um, with the budget being depleted, I, I just don't have the money to feed any incoming dogs for the rest of the year, so.
Mr. Harper?
Thank you, Lefty. Is there any way to recoup any money from this court case?
Uh, no, sir. I don't see that happening.
All right, so the owner, the owner get relinquished, but he's not taking any responsibility of that, and of course, he didn't take any responsibility for, so.
That's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Ingram?
Ms. Fortato kind of touched on, uh, the kind of dogs that were available, but, uh, for anybody that might be watching at home, or for any of us that we happen to be talking about this, um, can you go through a little bit of, uh, like, costs that somebody might incur if they were to come down tomorrow to pick up a, one of these pups, if they were trying to take some off your hands?
So we don't, uh, do adoptions from our facility, we, uh, transfer them all out to other groups. We have, we don't really have the mechanism to do the vetting, um, uh, to, for a potential adopter. So we generally, um, send, uh, people to the Humane Society. I know the Humane Society is, um, going to be taking some of the dogs, uh, but with the holiday, we're, we're one day behind where we normally are, uh, with things, but, I suspect that, uh, the majority of the dogs will be gone by the end of this week. There are some dogs that are still being held, they were not owner relinquished, there's six of them. They will have to stay for the remainder of the court, uh, court case, but, um, anyone who's interested in adopting one of these dogs, um, can contact, uh, the Humane Society probably early next week, and they will be able to tell you what they have available from there.
Mr. Patterson?
I just want to thank you for what you do. Sure it's a very thankless job, but a very difficult job, and you have to deal with some of the heartbreaking messes that the rest of us don't want to, so just thank you for that.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Mr. Vachaspati? Anybody else? Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you, have a great evening.
Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item eight-two, budget transfer nineteen dash zero 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 one, from fund zero eight zero, general corporate to department zero seventy-five, general county, department zero seventy-one, public properties, zero two zero auditor, zero three one circuit court, zero three six public defender, zero four two coroner. The total amount for this transfer is sixty-four thousand three hundred and forty dollars. It's to transfer the, transfer to cover AFME increases pursuant to the negotiated contracts for general fund departments that are projected to require supplemental funds to cover the AFME wage increases in FY twenty nineteen. Is there such a motion? Mr. Esri, second. Ms., Ms. Taylor, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, nay? Okay, item eight-three is a very similar motion, um, that has to do with the AFME thing, but I will read it. Uh, budget transfer for nineteen dash zero 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 one-two, fund zero eight zero, general corporate to department zero seven five, general county, zero twenty-three recorder. Total amount is twelve hundred and thirty-four dollars. The reason is to transfer for the, for the, to cover the AFME increases pursuant to the negotiated contracts for general fund departments that are projected to require supplemental funds to cover the AFME wage increases in FY twenty nineteen. Is there such a motion? Mister, Dr. Young, Mister Thorzland for the second, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Okay, item B, county clerk, request authorization to award contract to Platinum Technology Resources LLC for voter registration and poll book software and vendor support system pursuant to RFP two zero one nine dash zero zero five. Is there such a motion? Mister Tinsley, second, Mister Patterson, discussion? We do have Clerk Ammons here this evening, if you've got questions. Mister McGuire? Mister Storey, next.
Hello, Mister Ammons, how are you?
Good evening, Mister McGuire, how are you, sir?
It's good to see you, of course. I know she didn't bring me any of that dessert you had.
Oh, I think Leah made that.
Okay, so just a little more information about the program and, uh, how it'll work. So obviously, it's a change. How much will it change, and will, will we still have the same function and everything we had? What, what's your expectation? Will we be able to do everything we did before?
So the purchase, the purpose of the RFP, of the change, is to move away from the, uh, proprietary software that we have now, the poll book program and the voter registration program. That is, from our estimation, considered a single point of failure, because we only had one person who knows, or who knew how to work on that, and that person is, uh, is no longer working for us. She was working on contract, and she is no longer working for us. So we, uh, the vendor, will be able to provide all of those, the necessary steps for poll book and voter registration that we currently have, and they also have the ability to customize it, uh, in such a way that, uh, fits the program that we have, or, uh, the, the process that we use here in Champaign.
Dr. Storey?
Thank you. I was looking at the, uh, at the memorandum, it said that you selected this because previous vendor had been hacked, their data compromised.
No, 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 so the, um, the choices, there were two companies that responded, Platinum and VR. At a conference that we attended, myself, the chief of staff, as well as our director of training, we listened to several presentations, and the second company who responded to the RFP really described some very troubling situations that they dealt with in being hacked, uh, at a particular point, and as we sat and listened, we just could not see how we would support or, or, or go with a company who's telling us they've just recently been hacked, and all the different reasons why they were hacked, I just couldn't see or how I could bring that back to you and say, yeah, we chose a company that just discussed with us all the ways that they were hacked to prevent us from being hacked. So I didn't think that was a good idea.
Other discussion, uh, Mister Esri, then Ms. Fortato?
Yes, thanks. Um, Mister Ammons, um, just, this customization, is there, like, a certain amount that's built into the initial purchase and future updates, or is that going to be on top of, like, you know, future maintenance costs, or?
So what the gentleman, whose name is Jay, uh, has said to us repeatedly is that he builds these systems for, for, you know, clerks all over the, all over the country, and whatever we need done, uh, to customize for our system, would be done on that initial, uh, cost, I guess, or that initial purchase, but if there were other things that needed to be tweaked in order to fulfill the, uh, the content of the care, the, uh, the contract, then we wouldn't have any problems with that. We'll be paying for this with IVRS grant funds, so, uh, we'll have the ongoing maintenance paid for out of the ongoing IVRS grant.
Thank you.
Fortato?
Uh, your memo, memo indicated that the difference between the two bids, uh, was sizable. Could you ballpark that for me?
I do not have the actual bid, uh, the cost, in, in front of me. The biggest reason, I, I think, uh, for us, like I said, was the conference that we were at and listening to the, the presenters, but also the vendor that we've chosen for ESNS is our hardware program, uh, hardware system, and they have a relationship from a software standpoint, so, uh, we already have that sort of camaraderie or that synergy also between those two entities. But I can get, uh, Ms. Fortato, I can give you the, the figures, did you, do you have them?
Could you, uh, could, could you, could somebody say that into the microphone, just for the record?
Yeah, that, that being over a hundred thousand a year is significant. Anybody else, discussion? I've got a couple of quick questions. Have we had the state's attorney review this contract?
Yeah, so they're currently looking at it, uh, we, they just sent us back a couple of, of questions, minimal changes that we sent back to Platinum, and we anticipate having it closed by the middle of the week.
Okay, uh, that was one, and then, um, you kind of... And then you kind of alluded, or alluded, you talked about this being more national, but it looked like in Illinois, we might be the largest county that they're dealing with. Do you know?
Well, Platinum is definitely, I think we are one of the largest counties that they would have as a contract. I've spoken with Don Gray from Sangamon County, who also uses them for voter registration and poll book. Talked to folks in Christian County. There's several different places I called and did the due diligence to follow up with them and see what their record of success or service is, and everyone was pretty pleased with their work overall. And so, it gave me the comfort that I needed to move forward.
That's the only question I had. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Thank you all. Thanks, Jim, for your service. I appreciate it.
I was not a nay. I was an aye, but I wanted to ask if there was any opposition. Okay, item C one, from under the county executives to review and recommend the IT Systems Administrator. This is the financial portion of the job content review that was done in policy personnel. So, is there such a motion? Mr. Esri, second. Mr. Harper, any discussion? Ms. Fortado?
I mean, just to sort of reiterate, pretend I could say that word, repeat Connie's point that, I mean, this is not unique to this position, that we in general aren't quite at market level for a lot of our positions. So, I mean, I support, you know, this classification, but it might just be something to keep in mind. Just because I think we're voting for this classification now doesn't mean that it should be, should not be in the mix as we sort of look at the landscape of our personnel and how they're compensated, which I know is a project that you have in 2020, darling.
Anybody else, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Okay, Annual Tax Levy Ordinance is in our packet. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Clemmons, second. Ms. Fortado, discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The annual budget and appropriation ordinance and the memos that were attached to this, is there such a motion? Mr. Thorzland, is there a second? Ms. Taylor, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. And I would just take an opportunity to thank all of you who went through this process. It was a little different this time, but I think we had good constructive conversations, and I appreciate, I know Ms. Fortado and I do appreciate that, that's you, your comments and how we move forward. Request approval of the property liability and workers' comp insurance policies that are in the packet. Is there such a motion? Mr. McGuire, second. Mr. Harper, discussion? We do have Molly Rawlings in here if you've got questions. Molly, I do have one just because it came up in our, in our finance review, and I know you've told me personally this before, but what is inland marine?
Inland marine is another term for equipment. So, basically, what it means is it's property coverage, but we know that property is not in one location. It can move around. So, it came from ocean marine, and now it's inland marine, meaning it's on land.
It means we don't have little boats that run around in the town.
Right, right. We consider those trucks.
They're not duck boats, just to be clear.
Exactly. If you put it on a duck boat, though, it would be covered until it went in the water, and then it wouldn't be.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, Molly. Appreciate you being here. Okay, motion passes. Item five, Urbana Park District Proposal. Unfortunately, I didn't get this removed. I don't think this is, go ahead, Ms.
So, I met this afternoon for about three hours with the park district. It was our second or third meeting. They are not here tonight because they have chosen probably another option. The park district has the opportunity to apply for fairly significant several million dollar grant for the building of Health and Wellness Center. They're hoping to locate that potentially in our area of town. They already rent spaces from the county in terms of the gym and the fields around the building, and so they were wanting us to potentially consider, and it is still a possibility, I guess, on their radar, the corner of Lyman and Washington. But they have a very short timeframe to write the grant, and they do require that they have a deed in place for the property. So, we decided that the timeframe was pretty quick for us to be able to get anything done, and that they do have some other options in terms of space. Most likely, they have some other options, a couple downtown, other places, but they're looking primarily at park district properties at this time. Weaver Park is one of the ones on their radar, which is close to us. And so, should they consider that, there would still be a close nearby facility here. But in the process of the conversations, they talked about the desire to do some site planning together since we do share, Weaver Park, the school district, and the county all own property together that covers a several block area right here, and it would be interesting for us to try to do some site planning together. The school district and some other things might be necessary for like new lighting, the possibility for the Art Bartel Road to actually be a little bit wider and curbed, having more parking space, just those kind of things. And so, we talked about after they get their grant finished for this particular project, that we would sit down as a group and try to do some little bit longer range planning together. So, that's where we ended up.
Okay, thank you, County Executive Kleppel. At this time, I would like to call Ms. Ogden up to talk about the public safety facilities' master plan updating for financing options. This is for discussion only.
So, tonight, I just wanted to take an opportunity to provide some preliminary high-level information regarding the county's options to finance its public safety facility needs. And both Ms. Fortado and Mr. Goss and Ms. Kleppel, and I met with Elizabeth Hennessy a few months ago to start talking about what the county's options were, and I have had, you know, continued discussions with Raymond James, Ms. Hennessy. So, again, this is just some high-level information that I wanted to provide to you tonight. I apologize you can't see this very well, but basically, this first slide is a snapshot of the county's current debt. One thing I want to point out is this reflects principal only. The first column under the yellow is the debt certificate that the county is in the process of refunding, and that is debt service that is budgeted in the general fund. The last three columns are alternate revenue debt issues, which are paid from the public safety sales tax. And that public safety sales tax debt service is not retired in full until the end of fiscal year 2028. This is basically a slide that shows the county's public safety sales tax revenues. You can see the first column reflects the fiscal year. The next column is public safety sales tax revenue as budgeted in 2020 at four point nine million dollars, and then anticipated average increase of one point two five percent, which rolls up to the total revenue in the next column. The middle column represents the existing debt service for public safety sales tax, and you can see, as I mentioned earlier, that retires in fiscal year 2028. After that, the column after the existing debt service reflects operating expenditures. As you know, we just went through the budget process, and the county also uses public safety sales tax revenues to pay for certain allowable expenditures for operations, including also some programs, the reentry program, Youth Assessment Center, the drug court coordinator's salary and health insurance is paid with public safety sales tax revenues, the jail classification lieutenant, health insurance and wages are paid with public safety sales tax revenues. And just to be conservative, we have built in a three percent anticipated increase in those expenditures throughout the fiscal year 2045. And so, really, the column that I want to focus on is the second from the right, which is a remaining public safety sales tax. And what I want to point out is that, you know, we have current debt through 2028. You can see there's absolutely no capacity for the county to be able to make additional debt service payments because we just don't have the available revenues. The county statutory debt limit is actually two hundred and fifty-one million dollars, and at the beginning of fiscal year 2020, we have less than twenty million dollars in debt issued. So, in terms of the statutory capacity to issue new debt, we have plenty of room, but we just don't have available revenues to be able to make new debt service payments, at least until the end of 2028. After that, there is some capacity that the county would have to be able to issue debt, but it's fairly minimal in regards to what the county would need if we're going to look at some kind of a master plan. I know that at this point, you know, the plan that's before you or the information that's been put in front of you that was put together as regards to a study, there hasn't been any finalization of that, but the numbers that are available in remaining public safety sales tax revenues reflected here would not be adequate to be able to make debt service payments to fund any kind of large-scale facility improvements or expansion. Does anyone have any questions on this slide? I know it's difficult to see. I'm just basically trying to establish the fact that, you know, we have limited available revenues to be able to fund a large-scale facilities project. The other thing to keep in mind, actually, I think we cover it on the next slide here in the middle, if the county were to issue alternate revenue bonds, those would require one point two five times debt service coverage. So, basically, we would have to have enough revenue or enough revenue in fund balance to be able to cover one point two five times the amount of debt service payments that the county would have. So, there's a couple of options available to the county. We could issue alternate bonds to fund any kind of facility improvement by asking the voters to approve a facility sales tax. As you know, we did that a couple of years ago via referendum, or an increase in the public safety sales tax. The deadline for the county board to authorize that to be on the November third ballot would be August seventeenth. And just, I want to make you aware that alternate revenue bonds do require a petition period and also a public hearing prior to issuance. So, essentially, after the ordinance was published, the public would have an opportunity to file a petition with the county clerk's office, and if there were a certain percentage of registered voters that sign that petition, then issuance of alternate revenue debt service would have to go before the voters on a referendum question. And alternate revenue bonds are considered a general obligation of the county. They maintain the county's general obligation bond rating, so they're attractive to investors. And basically, what happens is that they, we do levy for that debt service, but then in February, we abate that levy, so it doesn't end up being a burden to property taxpayers because it's being paid with an alternate revenue source. In this case, it would be either public safety sales tax or facility sales tax.
Yeah, so potentially, there could be separate ballot items for the tax and for the bonds? Is that correct, or am I misunderstanding?
Yes, so if the county were to issue the bonds, if we were successful in getting, you know, a new revenue source by referendum, and then we were to issue bonds, if there were a certain percentage of voters that filed a petition with the county clerk's office, then we would have to put that referendum question on the ballot.
But in a different election?
Yes. So, just a little bit of information about both the public safety sales tax and the facility sales tax is that it doesn't apply to unprepared food, drugs, and medical supplies, registered vehicles, farm equipment, boats, anything that the current public safety sales tax doesn't apply to, the facility sales tax wouldn't apply to, or an increase to public safety sales tax wouldn't apply to. And both of these sales taxes have to be incremented in quarter percent increments. And I know that when the public safety sales tax was first implemented several years ago, there was not the ability at that time for there to be language in the referendum question for the tax to be sunsetted. That has changed, and so that can actually be part of the referendum question if the board were to choose to do that. So, just to give an example, I mean, this is going to vary per household depending on their consumer spending, but just as an example, if a household spent eight thousand dollars a year on consumer goods, this would be a cost of twenty dollars a year for that household, and basically, for every one hundred dollars of goods purchased, there would be a twenty-five cent tax applied. So, the referendum question related to facility sales tax, in this case, if the board were to ask for a quarter cent facility sales tax, it would generate approximately five million dollars annually, and this is the actual referendum question that would go on the ballot. Again, you can see the first, the end of the first portion of the question in brackets, there's a statement that says for a period not to exceed blank years. So, there would be where, if the county board wanted to ask for this and wanted to say that they were going to sunset it, that's where that number would be inserted. And this is statutory language, so you do not have the ability to change this language. In regards to public safety sales tax increase currently is a quarter of a percent, the question would be an increase, and in this case, if it were an increase by a quarter of a percent, that would generate an additional five million dollars annually. And you also have the ability to implement sunset language as well if the board would choose in this referendum question. And one of the things that I wanted to make sure that we vetted with bond counsel and our financial advisor is that if the county board chose to move forward with a request in a referendum for an increase to public safety sales tax with a sunset, that that sunset would only apply to the increase, and that is in fact true, that if we ask for an increase in the public safety sales tax with a sunset, then the sunset would only apply to the increase. It would not apply to the initial public safety sales tax already in place. And that's all the information that I have to present.
Questions for Ms. Ogden, Mr. Rector?
So, I'm just not familiar with the bond market. What kind of, I mean, obviously, fifty million, five million years, a ten-year thing, but is there like a thirteen-year or a twelve-year bond term, or is it increments of like ten or fifteen, and then could we prepay, or?
The county's financial policies don't allow us to issue debt for longer than the anticipated lifespan of a facility. So, you know, generally, you're looking between twenty and thirty years is when you're issuing debt, but if... But if, you know, there are some scenarios. For instance, if the county were to use every available penny that it received in new revenue, for example, $5 million, and was to put that towards repayment in as timely a manner as possible, a, you know, I'm just going to throw a number out there, $50 million issue could potentially be paid off in a much shorter time span, even less than 15 years potentially.
Ms. Fortato?
John, I think that's a really good question. And it's something we've sort of been discussing in the finance committee. And I haven't said this to my caucus or anything. I've been thinking really hard about the financial side of it and particularly the timing of the financial side of it. And I understand the sort of attractiveness of construction projects. I've done a lot of capital projects in my life. And like that, when you get to that punch list and you're like going through the final walkthrough, there is nothing more exciting than that. And I understand the, sort of the urgency of wanting to put every penny towards paying it off and paying it off quickly. But there's four things I wanted to bring up. And I just, I'm bringing these up today, not that I anticipate we have like a big discussion on it. But I do agree with Jim that I thought our budget discussion was really good. So I just wanted to bring four things up that maybe we could talk about between now and June or August, whenever we actually have to put this on the ballot. The first is, I want to make sure that as we construct anything, that we have thought very hard about the maintenance and the long-term maintenance and the sunsetting of technology so that a future board in 25 years isn't in the position that we're in now. And so, you know, when we're talking about sunsetting attacks and/or putting all of the money into paying off the debt, which I want to pay off any debt that we incur as quickly as possible, but also having a really comprehensive look at maintenance long-term and preventative maintenance so we don't end up in the same situation. The second thing is, you know, we've talked a lot. Stan brought up, you know, in our budget discussion that the share, for two administrations now, we've had a sheriff that's asked us for more positions. And we've also had a lot of discussion around the compensation level of our current staff at the sheriff's office and whether that makes us competitive or not competitive on a market. And we've also had, every time we have a financial chart up here, it's in about six years that the revenue we're bringing in crosses with the expenditures that we're taking out. And so like long-term viability of our public safety financing landscape and the county's finances as a whole, I think is something that we really have to consider. And so if, as we're looking at, I mean, we're not going to, I, we're not going to have a lot of, I've said this in the finance committee meeting, a lot of bites at this apple, right? So if we're going to take a bite at asking the public for a tax increase, we have to make sure that we take the right bite, thinking in the short term, but also thinking, what is the financial landscape of the county five years out, 10 years out, 20 years out? And that's hard, but it's, everything I've seen is like there's clouds on the horizon. And I think that this construction conversation has to be done in consideration of that. Third, and this is, this is the most, just my opinion, is that when I think of building a facility that addresses the very real life lived experience of those who are incarcerated and the safety of those who work in that facility, that's just one part of a public safety landscape. We have had multiple studies that people, both on this board and in the community, have taken part in. We got a summary of those from somebody in the public last time, where there are concrete asks for programs that in some cases could be startup programs. And working with Mr. McGuire and Pranjal and Kyle, we went through the racial justice task force and have funded a research position at the sheriff's office. So what I'm saying, programs, I'm not saying like we throw a dart, you know, at a wall and hope that we have a program that works. What I'm saying is we now have a research person in place that can help us think about strategically, where do we put our program? If we are going to do programs, just looking at the last snapshot that we got on jail population, there were 32 domestic abuse cases within that landscape. To me, that signals, that was really alarming. What if we looked at that over the course of three months and then looked at nationally best practices? What are people doing to make sure that that isn't happening in our community? Because it's cheaper in the long run to divert people from that behavior than to pay to incarcerate them. And my fourth point is, and I know that this is going to be different depending on the constituencies that we represent, but I'm just going to be very, very honest. We are going to have to sell whatever sort of tax or funding mechanism that we put together. And for the folks that I'm talking to, having a broader understanding of how the public, if we go the public safety sales tax route, how it can not only help us to improve the facility that we have, but also to give the sheriff the resources that he needs to adequately staff and fund public safety in this community and address some of the lingering community concerns that have been coming before this board for a decade, or if not longer, is going to be a much easier sell than saying we're going to put every penny right into paying off the bond. So I think that there's a balance. I'm not saying that I think we would have to take 30 years to pay it off, but those are four things I want us to consider. So maintenance, long-term, long-term financial picture of the sheriff's office and the county in general. How do programs fit into the conversation? And then how do we, as a body, collectively get on the same page so that whatever we do going forward, we could sell it to a diverse group of constituents, right? They're going to have different opinions on a matter, like an increase of a tax.
Other comments, questions? Okay, Ms. Ogden, thank you. Okay, item 8D1. Is there a motion to move the closed session minutes dated 10/26/2005 to open and maintain all others as closed? Mr. Esri, is there a second? Ms. Fortato, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Chairs report. I do not have a chairs report this month. Items to be designated for consent. 8A1, 2, 3, B1, C1. And we're going to hold off the tax and budget things, even though they pass unanimously. Those are going to be held off of the consent agenda. So that would be 8C4, and that's it.
The tax could go on if you wanted to. The tax levy?
We'll keep it off.
Okay.
Great. Are there any further questions for Jim Goss? Seeing none, we'll move on to item nine, Justice and Social Service, Kyle.
All right, we have a very light agenda, so I'm going to keep this moving quickly. No funny business, Chris. We have the monthly reports for emergency management agency, probation and court services. Those will be placed on file without objection. And then we also have the September 2019 Rosecrans reentry financial report. Does anybody have any questions or comments on those? All right, so we have our semi-annual review of closed session minutes. Is there a motion to move the closed session minutes dated December 13, 1993, September 16, 1994, May 5, 1995, 3rd, May 3, 1995, April 17, 1997, June 9, 1999, July 5, 2000, July 12, 2000, July 21, 2000, September 14, 2000, and July 9, 2003, to open and maintain all others as closed? Leah and Stan, keep it bipartisan. Any comments? None. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And I have no chairs report, so it's all I got.
Great, that was short and simple. Thank you very much, Kyle. Totally appreciate it. Any other business? Mike Ingram?
We're almost, we're almost out of here, sorry. No, no. No, I just, I did want to say, I was glad that we had the public participation that we did at the last full board meeting when it came to the facilities project. You know, we've had a lot of talks in our facilities meeting about what we think the landscape should be and what the public is looking for when it comes to what we're going to do with the facilities, particularly the two jails. For those of you that are paying attention, we also just had something come through the state legislature that has to do with suspended license, driving on suspended and the ability to incarcerate for that. There are other things coming down the pipeline. Anybody that went to the Supreme Court, Illinois Supreme Court panel that was held in town or any of the out-of-town ones that had to do with cash bond, their recommendations are looking to be coming down. So I think not only are we seeing some interesting things coming through the state, but also what we saw when people came in to talk about their expectations of us, I think what we're seeing is that they're looking at us to pay attention to those things as well, not just what the current need is. Because the current need, certainly from other states that are doing similar things, looks like it's going to diminish. So I just want to make sure that everybody's kind of paying attention to that stuff because I'd really like to not make, not make the mistake of overbuilding something that we're going to really regret later as we've made that mistake a couple of times in the past. So I'm glad that Ms. Fortato pointed out some of the things that we need to be looking at in terms of the budgeting. But also, I think we need to be looking at a couple of things in terms of what kind of space we're actually going to be needing. So I think looking at those programming needs and looking at what we can do to keep more people out of our jail is very important. So I'm hopeful that we see some more information coming from the state soon about other things that are going to keep people out of our jail. Thanks.
Thanks for those comments, Mike. And thank you, Stephanie, for bringing your strategic plan forward. I think it's very cognizant that we, moving forward, look at the bond issue, that we look at the referendum issue, that we look at the jail facilities, that we look at what the racial task force came up with several years ago, that we collectively put our minds and our energies and efforts to try to sell this project moving forward and try to sell it to our diverse community. So I appreciate you moving forward with those, some of those strategies and sharing those with us as well. So thank you. Are there any further comments? We rest adjourned. Thank you.